Today, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the Bluff Town Council regular meeting. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jim Sayers.
Luann Hook.
Brandt Murray.
Ann Lepin.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
The first thing we're going to do is approve the Bluff Town Council regular meeting minutes from May second, two thousand and twenty-three. Has everyone received them, read them, and are there any changes, modification, or points of discussion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Is that the one where I have the public comment? Is that May second?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
I just, the, the, I just would like it, the point of it was to say that they could hit refresh, that the site was working just fine. Not that it was a disaster zone, so I just adding that to hit refresh was what the public comment was, was just how to the public to hit refresh and the site would work just fine. And, and now it works just fine every time. But I just don't like that it's out there as a fail.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you just said.
I don't want it just to be written down that we had a failed site. My point was just hit refresh and it would.
Right, which is what it means when you do something twice, you're refreshing it. So, I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
So Jim, you motion to approve, and Brandt?
Yes.
Here in the second. Any further discussion?
So how does it read then? I, I guess I missed.
It'll stay the same.
It's had to try twice. Okay. I had to try. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then, is there a motion? To go into closed session?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
Mayor, do we need to say why we're going into closed session?
It's, it's in the agenda to discuss purchase, exchange, lease of real property, or pending or possible litigation.
Thank you very much.
All right, so council, you should each have a separate link, so close out of this link for this meeting. And Craig will continue recording nothing until we get back, but we'll go in on the other link. And Erin's monitoring.
Right. We're but we're on here. Craig, are you still on? Okay.
We can call if you'd like to.
So it is 6:57 PM. This is a continuation of the Bluff Town Council meeting. Okay, somebody's got some music going. Of May 9th, 2023. For the purposes of roll call, I'll note that all five of us council members are present, as well as our town manager. So we'll go to Agenda Item 2, Update on Active Transportation Plan Advisory Committee. Lou?
Yeah, we have another meeting on the 18th, which we'll be talking about some more grants and that sort of thing with Chris Wiltzy and with Chris Hall. Let me just double check that the 18th is correct. Let's see. I guess it'll be the 16th. Yeah, May 16th at 4 o'clock, we'll have another meeting. But I did go to the webinar for Safe Streets for All. It's a really big federal grant. They really encourage a lot of participation from different communities and different groups. So it's hopefully, we don't need to do it for our first part. But if we do, if the state and if UDOT doesn't have enough money to fund it without going out to the federal money, it would be something that we would need to combine with, in my opinion, we would need in order to be competitive at all, we'd need to combine with the tribe and with the county, with White Mesa, with the Navajos, all that along with our town and do a bigger, a bigger area. And that's what they're looking at. They're looking at a bigger project. The Chris Hall from UDOT is a regional planner. He was really encouraging on grants and things that are through the state. Once we get our active transportation plan in place and approved, then we can look at those monies that the state has already allocated. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on what's going on there. But anyway, he was, he was really encouraging. And that, that's really about the only update. We didn't have a meeting today or anything, so most of that's probably review.
Any questions for Lou about that?
Thank you, Lou.
You're welcome.
All right.
Jim, I think you've, you're muted, but it looks like you might have a question.
Do we want to have public comment, Mayor?
Oh, we could do that, I guess. I forgot about that. Thank you. So we'll have public comment. There will be a three-minute time limit for each person wishing to comment. If you exceed the three-minute time limit without permission, the meeting controller will mute you. So is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? And if so, just raise your hand or let us know in some way. And thank you, Jim. Once I get out of order, it's chaos. Mr. Teme. You need to unmute, please. Thank you.
We challenged today. Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to share with everybody that I had a two-hour meeting with Mayor yesterday. We discussed a lot of the concerns that most people have, and they are the same concerns that I have, as we may, and someone who's been in town for the past 13 years. We also took a side tour where I showed her where the building is going to be located. We also looked at the wash that seems like it's concerning some people. You know, there, there are a couple of ways to get information. One is to get it directly from the horse's mouth. And with that, I would like to extend an invitation to anyone in town who has questions or concerns, would like to see what we're doing, to get ahold of me. I'll, I'll answer their questions as best as I can. I'll take them on a tour of what we're doing. That's if people really want solutions and, and want to get, you know, want to express their concerns. If people want to wait till the public hearing, that's fine as well. It makes a lot of difference if you see it on the ground. The property is posted no trespassing, and even though Anne Brown trespassed, nobody needs to, you know, come in early in the morning or late in the evening to take pictures. I would encourage people to just contact me. I'm an open book. I would love to share what we're doing with people and hopefully, you know, take care of their concerns. Thanks, Mayor.
Anyone else like to make a public comment? Jim Hook. Go ahead, Mr. Hook.
Thank you. This was a really strange meeting. I had people coming in here wondering where the meeting was and, and why they couldn't find anybody, and I dealt with them all. Now, what I would like to comment is that the San Juan County weed guys are in town right now, and they're starting to help me on the Russian Knapp weed and the riparian project that I've been working on in the river bottom. Also, the giant cane is still big bullseye on state weed lists, and they would really like the town to invite them to come down to continue the war against that really bad invasive plant. The places where they sprayed last year have done really well with just the Roundup. And but there's, there's too many pet plants in town, and we need to get rid of those. And the county weed guys and lodge are more than happy to help you choose plants to replace that giant cane with. So keep that on your radar. I know you've got a lot on your plate, and I'm sorry about that. That's why I'm not in town government. Love you, guys. Bye. Appreciate you, appreciate you.
Mr. Teme, did I cut you off before you were finished?
No, Mayor, I was done. Thank you so much.
Oh, okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Right, it's 7:04.
Mayor, I had my hand up. I'd like to just ask Jim Hook a question.
Hold on.
How long are the county?
Hold on a second. First, identify yourself.
Oh, yes, this is Mary Gillan. And Jim, how long will the county weed guys be in town? And how would we find them?
I think probably you're going to need to contact Jim separately, Mary.
Right, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I probably need my eyes checked. I'm missing some of these hands. Are there any other hands up that anyone sees?
Almer has raised his hand.
You're muted, you're muted.
Yes, sorry, that was from the first time. I didn't unclick it, so just ignore that.
All right, thank you. All right. So we will go now to number three, the update on the Cooperative Cultural Center meetings, which were held May 2nd and May 9th. And then a request for liaison for the Design Review Committee. And Jim, do you want to take the May 2nd meeting and the liaison?
I, I'd love to, except my minutes are obvious, are pretty obviously that they got lost somewhere in the cloud. I don't know what happened with the, I, I revised it and they're, they're just lost. All there is is the May 2nd agenda, so I, I can't tell you until I get back in there and recreate the minutes.
All right, why don't I just quickly cover the highlights of the May 9th meeting, which was today? It was Damian Ballerman, Dave Conine, Aaron Nelson, myself. I think that was it, wasn't it, Aaron, just the four of us? And the.
Yeah, I was there, Mayor.
Oh, and Brandt, thank you, the five of us. The end result of it really was that what we need to have is a half-day meeting between UDB, Utah Dine, and the Town Council to lay out what our priorities are. But it really doesn't need to happen until after we get the asbestos report back, because the asbestos report, in our minds, is really going to control whether we can do the fire suppression, or do we need to do the asbestos mitigation first? How do we do the fire suppression? And then identifying a pool of money that's common, that's not already dedicated to specific projects like the $50,000 for the USDA is really fire suppression materials. It can't be used for anything else. So we need to narrow down the priority. Right now, I felt today like we kind of spun through a number of ideas. Damian Ballerman and Dave Conine are going to arrange a date to come down to Bluff, and we'll get, all get together, walk the property, look at the outside, see what we need to have done. Brandt's going to work with Damian on getting some mowing set up and some cleaning up over there. But the bottom line is, a lot of this is just prioritization, and I felt like we all need to get together to do that. Aaron, anything you want to add or clarify?
Not at this time.
So stay tuned, we'll get a date out there in the next couple of weeks. I did suggest to Jim, I'm not sure if we really need a meeting next week or not. I'll let Jim make that decision. So Jim, do you want to talk about the request for liaison for the Design Review Committee?
Yeah, I think we've matured in the DRC to the point where the town council needs to designate a specific liaison on this task with the DRC. Someone who takes direction and does a regular report and stays on top of this, probably reports to the town manager, I would say, and, and to the mayor. I think it's very important that the town maintain, maintain the, the agenda and the minutes as long as we have title to the building. Of course, that could, that will change when, when the building is divided perhaps, but I think it's important at this point that that occurs. But this is something that is just a growth issue there. We, when we started out with the DRC, we weren't as far along as we are now. We're now, it's part of our strategy. I think it needs to be institutionalized, or the role of the representative on the DRC needs to be institutionalized within the town municipal government, more than simply a county. a council member who, who says, hey, I can do this, okay? Which has not been problematic, but when elections come around, it might prove to be obsolete.
Any questions for Jim or thoughts on that? So let, let me just throw this out. Aaron's been working on the amended 2023 budget and the 2024 budget. I've been working on it. Linda, when she gets back in town, will be working on it. I feel like this is a topic that really is a budget issue. There's been a projection in the state of Utah that will be down 1% to 2% in revenue and sales. There's also a projection, in my mind, where we're going to come in on certain funds at the end of the 2023 year. We've had some expenses that were unexpected or a little higher. 2023 will be fine in terms of making the adjustments. That's what you do at the end of the fiscal year. But 2024, I'm going to tell you right now, some of these requests that, that we're hearing, we're going to have to prioritize. Like where do, where does this request fall in relationship to, say, the Bluff Volunteer Fire Department's request, which is safety? So we're going to have to have some pretty serious budget discussions, and I'm going to ask that we not take any action on this tonight so that we can move this into the budget work session. Does that make sense to everybody, or do you want to disagree about?
I think it makes a lot of sense.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is, this is just very preliminary.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or thoughts here? All right, then, the next item on the agenda is a report on the conversation with Mark Stillson of the Division of Water Rights. Following the Bluff Water Works' last meeting, I set up a time to meet with Mark Stillson of Division of Water Rights to make an inquiry about whether or not the work Sunrise was doing would interfere with the prioritization of water rights for Bluff. And that meeting was April 19th. So Aaron and I had a phone conversation with Mark Stillson. We had invited Marx Powell, but he wasn't able to make it. What Mark Stillson said in a nutshell was that, and he reviewed all of the work that was done to date by Sunrise, and he said it would not interfere with the prioritization or change it, and that this looked fine to move ahead on. So Sunrise is in the process of finalizing the project. They had most of the work done. I did send an email to Sunrise today following a note from Marx Powell identifying a couple of concerns that he had. But since the conversation with Mark Stillson was April 19th, I held off about a week before I con, well, I can't say exactly a week. I held off on contacting Sunrise to go ahead and complete the work when I, until I was sure that I didn't hear from Mark. So it's in the process. I did send that follow-up email today to Ken Tallow. Were there questions from the council?
No, thank you very much.
So if no one has any questions, number five was update on distribution of tax on gravel pits. I was going to make a follow-up call, and I haven't had time to do that. I imagine that they're aware that there are three gravel pits, but they might only be aware that there are two. So hopefully, this will get on my list to get done before next meeting, since that's our last meeting of the month. Any questions, thoughts? It, it, I did get information that it was BNC Road Funds. It also covers counties, cities, and towns that have gravel pits. So, and they're working on the algorithm to figure out, you know, who gets what, basically. So, so it's basically impossible to know how much we could get. Right. Yeah, I just want to be sure that we have all the gravel pits included, and so, thank you, Linda. Report on the International Dark Sky Application Committee. I think so far, only two people other than myself have indicated that they want to be on that committee, and that's Sarah Barak and Aaron Nelson. So unless I have missed somebody, or, or I've missed somebody, that's going to be the initial committee to work on this.
I was on that one.
Very good. I knew there was a fourth, Lou, and I could not find a note, so perfect. Do you want to take it without me?
You've got plenty to do, so, however, however it works out.
I might have you just go ahead and do that with Aaron and Sarah. And then if you need some, you know, some more hands on deck, I'll help out, but that would be great. Thank you. Number seven, a request for approval of local consent for Ann Leppen. I'm going to move that to next week. I am unable to tend to my own business while I'm busy tending to the town, so this got deferred to next week, which is not a problem. But for anybody who might be curious, I'm hosting, as a private individual, an event, and I don't think I need local consent, because we're not selling anything, but I'm going to cover all bases. So it'll be on the agenda next week. Then number eight is the Bluff Fort's request for permission to clean out a culvert by the fort in the town's right-of-way and refresh the historic loop sign. And Aaron, I believe that's yours.
Yes, so Craig Miller, who's a representative at the fort, stopped into my office multiple times, and we have discussed a couple items, the first of which, I think it's probably on eastbound Main Street, there is a small brown sign that's just kind of very faded, and it says Bluff Historic Loop. I sent the council members the photo of that. The fort would like permission to just update that, make it look a little bit more fresh. And then the second piece is regarding some culvert cleanout. The fort is reporting that they have some water backing up onto their property in the southwest corner of their property, which is adjacent to the post office, and then some other private landowners to the south of the highway. So there are kind of two culverts. And so the one runs under Fifth East, and so they would be able to obtain some equipment to help clear it out, but they wanted to ensure that they had permission to do so. And so since that would be under a, you know, by a town road, they wanted to make sure that everything was A-OK before they proceeded with any of that work. And then if the Town Council had any comments, I don't know if it's a Roads Department question regarding work towards 191 slash High, or Main Street, both of those are kind of backing up onto their property. And I can share my screen if anyone has questions about the specifics of where this work would be done.
Jim?
Yeah, I looked at the culvert on the post office side on, under Fifth East, and, and it is definitely pretty clogged, but I don't think it would take much to clear it. I don't know anything about the other culvert that goes to the south. Oops, sorry.
Is there a culvert going under there? Because I think that's been part of the problem. It's, I don't think it goes through. That's part of the UDOT's problems on that one and over on Sixth. I don't think there's one that goes anywhere. It just goes under the road so that the road can still go through, but it just pools there is what it's done for years.
So should this go to the Roads Committee?
I think it'd be great if they clean out what they can find. I think that'd be awesome. Clean out what they see there, but it's probably just the one right under there, and maybe they'll unearth something that would be helpful to know.
Thoughts, anybody?
I don't know what kind of damage they could do.
Hey there. I'm across the street from the post office, so the one that comes diagonal from the edge of the fort comes over to the Yerby Shed and to my property. And so, but, you know, all our, all our culverts need to be cleaned out. So I would say, if they can do it, do it. Also, this time of the year, we can, after initial tree growth and stuff, we kind of need to look at our drainages throughout town, which may be, I know the fort did clean up Seventh South last year. So it is time to look at culverts ahead of the monsoon, and I think we should do that.
Hey, Brent, do you, have you seen the south culvert on your side, where it comes under the highway?
Yeah, yeah. Galen and I have talked about it for a long time, because it comes to the edge of the Yerby Shed, which is Galen's property and my property, and kind of ends right there. I don't, I've seen a few mosquitoes in town, by the way, so there must be a little bit of standing water, but there, I mean, I can't imagine much standing water now. I'm not sure.
Well, that's, that's good. I'd say that we ought to, if they're willing to clean those out, maybe they can do that, and then we just need to make sure that you and Galen are aware that more water may be coming under than has for a while.
Are they gonna, are they gonna clean along the highway, the UDOT stuff? Is that what you're talking about? I mean, I'm not clear about what, what they're gonna do.
Just under the, cleaning out the culvert that goes under, they just get that cleared out and under both those streets, if there is one under there. If they got the equipment, that would be a, a good.
It'd be a good thing to do.
Yeah.
What, what about the sign? Anybody have a sense of the, the refreshing the sign?
I don't have any problem with it, as long as it remains the same. I don't, I mean, I don't want it altered.
Yeah, or maybe just a new sign and put that one, I don't know. It's kind of cute, but it doesn't, I don't know that we need a bunch of blinking flashers, but I sort of.
You know, I like, I like the historic look, you know, a BUP sign looks historic, so.
Yeah, I do too, but it's, yeah.
So does anybody want to make a motion on either or both?
I'll make a motion that we give the fort permission to go ahead and clean out that culvert, but not do the sign yet. I need to think about the old historic sign, which is kind of what I like for our town.
I'll second that if it's both culverts, the one under Fifth and the one under the highway.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Tell them, thank you. Yeah, tell them, thank you. That's, that's great.
And then I noticed that other, because we were rearranging the agenda to be able to do the executive session at the beginning rather than the end, we left off other, left public comment dangling down there. We're done with public comment, but is there any other, other? I have another. Today is May 9th. This is Aaron Nelson's one-year anniversary with the town of Bluff.
Haven't aged a bit.
If there's nothing else, it's 7:24.
Motion to adjourn.